All right, are we ready to get started?
Yep.
Do we have Counselor Splealoff?
I just admitted him there.
Okay. And Counselor Whitney, I was looking for her too. She on there?
I have not seen her name pop up.
I'm here.
Okay.
I just changed my name. It was in a different name. Sorry.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'll call this meeting to order at 7:01, March 17th, 2022. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone. So first thing we'll do is pledge of allegiance. And Kevin, can you lead us in that?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yep.
All right, Jackie, can you take role?
Counselor Coker.
Counselor Coker is an excused absence. She might be here. If she will be, it'll be late.
Okay. Counselor Bjornson. Counselor Whitney.
Here.
Counselor Hooker.
Here.
Mayor Hollitt.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Spleedoff.
Here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I joined in with the video so late. I was trying to find it. My wife was messing with the computer and turning the speaker clear off.
No biggie. All right, first up is additions, corrections, or adjustments. Is there any from council? I have one thing to add. At our last meeting, we had a petition with over 400 signatures for the petition to remove the safe, public safety fee, and I want to put that down as discussion because we did say we would discuss it at the next meeting under 9.2. And then under 9.3, I want to talk a little bit about the new WAC committee for the city-based one. Any other additions? All right, public comment.
Mayor.
Yeah.
My hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see that. Go ahead.
Um, I wanted to see if we could get an update from the city administrator regarding the audio/video recording in the courtroom.
Sure, we can.
I don't have an update for that.
Oh, okay. Okay, um, I'll put that down for next meeting and I'll shoot an email. Is there any other additions? Dawn, your hand is still up. Is that an old hand?
Sorry, it is.
All right. Moving on to public comment, Kevin, do you have anyone there in the room for public comment? You're muted.
Sorry about that. I have Trudy Hammond with the hand up, I believe.
Okay, nobody there in person?
Oh, no, no physical person except myself.
Okay. Go ahead, Trudy.
Hi, Trudy Hammond, 76349 Willamette Way. And I was wondering about the fire report. Are those incidents for a month, a week? Or if maybe that could be defined at the public comment or later as that agenda item comes up for discussion? I'm wondering if it's weekly, monthly, or what? Thank you.
Are you able to answer that, Kevin?
Yeah, so the one that I believe I put in the package is for the last few months. I can, I'll look at the report specifically. So by the time we get down to staff reports, I'll be able to answer that correctly. But it's not just a week. I can tell you that.
Okay. Thank you, Trudy. Go ahead, Dan Barclay.
Sorry, I had to put the dogs in so I don't get called names again. Dan Barclay, 47501, Highway 58. And just a couple of quick observations. First of all, and I understand it may seem minor, it's trivial, it's flitting hairs, whatever. There, we do not have an interim city administrator. The word interim appears exactly zero times in the city charter, whereas pro temp, as we hire to pro temp, words do matter sometimes. So need to get rid of the interim part and go with the Latin term. It's not that hard. The second observation, and to the best of my knowledge, there's no hard and fast timeline for it to happen according to public meetings law, I think it says, in a timely manner. But and I know there was some growing pains with Zoom last meeting and so on and so forth. But call me spoiled, but for the last couple of years, within a couple of days of the meeting, and I attend meetings as part of the less than half of 1% citizens that do, because half of the meeting is people that are required to be there. And the other is people that choose to be there. I choose because I like things firsthand, verbatim, so on and so forth, rather than wait, you know, a couple of months on a hard copy summary or whatever. In the Zoom video, and that two-day turnaround was, it was amazing. It was, it was easy to research, or somebody cannot attend a meeting, they can go look at it, you know, while, while we're still in the same quarter. Is there anything we can do to get back to posting those Zoom meetings in a reasonably timely manner? Some people actually do research, or they want to know what's going on in the city or follow along or whatever. And like I said, as a matter of routine, I attend the meetings so that I've got it firsthand, but not everybody has that luxury. And I'll just, just that suggest, well, those two suggestions. Get rid of interim and get back to getting YouTube videos posted timely.
Thank you, Dan. Go ahead, Jenna Hancock.
Are you gonna use your earbuds? I don't want to hear it.
Okay.
Well, that's the last person I wanted to hear from.
Jenna Hancock. Okay, is there anyone else? All right, I have a letter in public comment to read. This letter is from the local museum, Upper Willamette Pioneer Association. It is from Deanna Wellman Hadley. And it came to me in the mail. "To the Oak Ridge City Mayor and City Administrator, inside the envelope of the first public safety fee billing was a form to apply for a means-based exemption. The museum applied for the exemption included required proof of income. We then received a response from Brian Kutchin stating that our request was disapproved. The Upper Willamette Pioneer Association would like to appeal the disapproval of the exemption request based upon the fact that we do not have the means to pay. The Oak Ridge Pioneer Museum is run by a Board of Directors on an all-volunteer basis and operated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Our income is from membership and donations, fundraisers and book sales. We provide a service to the community as historians and keepers of the artifacts of our ancestry. There is nothing fancy about what we do, and we are lucky to have..."
I haven't figured that out.
To provide, can everybody, Kevin, can you mute everybody?
Sorry.
No problem. "There is nothing fancy about what we do, and we are lucky to have the ability to provide information to those who inquire about who they are descended from. Oak Ridge has a fascinating history. Our expenses are simple: phone, electricity, water and sewer, and insurance." When this...
Oh, here's, here's the meeting going on right now.
Kevin, can you mute everyone?
I did, Mayor. I'm not sure what's going on.
There's several people that are not muted.
"Our expenses are simple: phone, electricity, water, sewer, and insurance. When this is subtracted from our income, the remaining sum adds up to a total of $55 per month for operation costs. Subtract the public safety from fee from this amount, and that leaves very little even for a frugal group of people like ourselves. Please reconsider the exemption denial for the Oak Ridge Pioneer Museum. It would not only be good for the museum, but for our community as well. Thank you, Deanna Wellman Hadley." I did call Deanna and speak with her, and she said that she has spoke with Kevin. So I think maybe could we add that in the agenda under administration, city administrator report, maybe? Do you have a little bit to talk about on that, Kevin?
So my plan is to do a work session with the council on April 7th, and the reason that we're putting off to April 7th is because we need to get our quarter three report in. So the finance director and I will have more information to share with the council on that. And so I can talk about nonprofits versus single family, and I can, I can cover all of that in the work session.
Okay. Um, so I want to go ahead and add that on the agenda to 9.4 for tonight, just so that council can comment on that if they have any other direction or to discuss that appeal. So 9.4 museum appeal. And Jenna, I see your hand up again. Are you hoping to participate in public comment? If you are, go ahead and unmute yourself.
And it is Gina. It's Gina.
Gina, go ahead.
I had to go in and change my settings and then come back and, you know, feed my son and...
No problem.
Anyway, I did email you earlier this week, I think on Monday, and I haven't received a spot response. And I would like to agree with Dan Barclay that you guys haven't posted the meetings in a timely fashion. And I also want everybody to know that our police force also polices Lowell. And I did the math, and they pay about half of the cost per man hour that we pay. Then now we have an emergency service fee, or whatever you guys want to call it. But we pay more per man hour for our services than what our services provide to other people. And that's all I want to say. Thank you. And I find it very hard to deal with Zoom and dealing with all of the technology. I think you guys are creating a barrier for the citizens to participate in the local government. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. I do want to make you, Gina, I'm sorry about that. I do want to make you aware that you are able to attend in person in City Hall even right now. We've had that available for many months.
I am a single parent of a disabled child, so I cannot come down to City Hall to participate in person. And when you called on me prior, I was serving my son dinner. So I don't have the lifestyle to provide me the opportunity to participate in that manner. But I also don't have very good internet connection. So I could go down there if you don't mind an 18-year-old coming down with me.
Children are welcome in City Hall as well for the council meetings. All right. Looking for more public comments. I don't see any more hands raised. And Kevin, you don't have anybody there? All right, on to mayor comments. I don't have any mayor. Actually, I do have one thing I wanted to mention, that tree planting festival is coming up Saturday, May 7th. I think it would be really nice if all of our counselors attended that. If there's anybody watching this that is interested in helping, they are looking for a lot of positions to be filled to help out to make that event successful this year. You can contact Vanessa Tharp if you're interested in helping. And again, that is Saturday, May 7th. All right, Kevin, can you scroll down just a little bit on the agenda? Counselors, do you have any comments or announcements?
Will we be getting a police report at all today?
Chief Martin is on the call tonight, and he prefers to give an oral report.
Okay, maybe at that time he can address the concerns from Gina, I believe it was, about the Lowell coverage and kind of how that works and why we have that in place.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, I would attempt to do it, but I know that he knows it very well and that he can address that much better than I ever could, so.
Chief Martin, are you willing to address that tonight, or do you want to wait till another meeting?
No, I could speak to that after my report.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon. You're muted.
So sorry about that. I wanted to ask Dan Barclay during public comment, mentioned the use of the word interim v. versus pro temp, and I wanted to know where that was used.
Did you want me to address that?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Well, it's addressed in the, if you go to the participants, it's interim CA. And I believe in your council packet that talks about the budget schedule and so on and so forth, there's multiple uses of the word interim CA. It's pro temp, you know, that might seem minor, but, but, you know, words do matter.
Thank you. I just wanted that clear.
Thank you. Was anything else, Counselor Kenyon?
No, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff. You're muted.
You can go ahead and let, can you let Melissa go first, and then I'll take it?
Sure, go ahead, Counselor Bjornson.
I was just going to basically say what Bobby did, maybe Chief Martin could address Gina's concerns. But I was gonna let Gina know if she can still hear us, that if she can, at least hang on for the audio. Until then, it's been addressed before, and Chief, Chief can give you a good rundown of what happens with our Lowell coverage, if you can hang on till that part of the meeting, Gina.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
I want council and everybody to know, I'm going to be going into surgery and on the 14th, so from now till then, and about three weeks after, I may be missing some council meetings. So I'd like to let everybody know now. If I'm not here, that's what it is. And so it's something I wanted to bring out in public and let everybody know what's happening here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Down to business from the city council. 9.1 budget calendar fiscal year 2223. Go ahead, Kevin.
Mayor, you skipped consent agenda.
Oh, my goodness, I did. I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Let's go ahead with the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion. We approve our consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion made from Counselor Whitney and seconded by Counselor Kenyon. Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Spleedoff.
Aye.
Mayor Hollitt.
Aye.
Counselor Whitney.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Hooker.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Thank you. Now on down to 9.1 budget calendar. Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, budget calendar is as far as the council night as a council action item. So just a program note, formatting note, I added a kind of a new format for your action items, both as an action on the agenda itself, as well as hopefully easier to read form for council, so you can conduct your business. So the budget calendar is essentially just the schedule of events for budget season. It's a really straightforward list of items that we have to get done. It's very process-heavy because that is actually required by, organized by statutes. So the budget count just keeps us on track, has target dates in there. And so staff right now is in the middle of developing the proposed budget, hopefully ready for April 18th release. No changes to the draft calendar, and staff is here to take questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, could we scroll to the calendar? Quickly, I, I just wanted to question whether or not it's in there to have a public hearing in the beginning. I remember last year it reading that it's recommended to have a public hearing at the first meeting of the budget or something like that. And then a second public hearing is required, which would be the one when the council holds the, the public hearing. Is that in here?
Counselor Dawn, so you'll notice the line that says May summary budget and hearing notice. So that is for the, the formal hearing before the, the city council. You can hold a second hearing, or in this case, a first one with the budget committee. There's nothing that prohibits you from scheduling a hearing. There's already a notice that we're required to put into the newspaper and our website. So whether you call a notice or a hearing, it's kind of, it's a little bit semantics, but we can certainly schedule a hearing.
Um, I'll, I'll look into that and find out if that, I feel like it was a requirement, but I honestly don't have it in front of me, so I'll look it up before we schedule it.
Any more questions, Counselor Kenyon?
No, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Yeah, I see where Dan was talking about. It's in, in this draft these got up, it's, it's commented on quite a few places here, interim city administrator.
Yeah, he can fix that later.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was just acknowledging that it is all over. Thank you.
Did you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Go ahead, Count, Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for the detailed outline of how we'll be processing this. I think it helps keep it transparent for our community to really know where we are in the step, and when we expect to be there and kind of a plan about how we'll be attacking this budget cycle.
I just have one question for Kevin. If we need to throw in more budget meetings, do you think we're gonna have sufficient time to do that and noticing meetings properly?
So we are a little crunched for time because we've got, I got a bit of a late start, but you know, it's not ideal to schedule more than one budget committee meeting in a week. So that last week in April, we can do a Monday, Wednesday, because typically we don't have any public meetings in that last week. Count, as you know, council meets in the, in the third week. So not ideal for staff, because staff typically wants time, a turnaround time, be a little longer in order to answer a bunch of questions that come up at the budget committee, but we'll do our best to work under a compressed schedule. Colleen and I know we're up against, so, you know, we're happy to serve this council in the best way.
Thank you. Any more questions about the budget calendar? All right, thank you, Kevin. Moving on.
Mayor?
Oh, yeah.
Is this an action item?
Good question. Can you scroll to the bottom?
Yes. So what I'm gonna do is scroll up to the CAF, Council Action Form, and you'll notice I've put a recommended motion in there for you.
I move to accept the budget calendar for fiscal year 2223 as presented.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Counselor Bjornson and Counselor Hooker.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Hooker. Thank you. Any more discussion on the calendar? Can you call for the vote, Jackie, please?
Counselor Spleedoff.
Aye.
Counselor Whitney.
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Mayor Hollitt.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson.
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Now moving on. You move back up to public comment to 9.1. All right, so 9.2, at our last meeting, we had a petition submitted by the citizens that we read and we agreed as a council that we would discuss it at the next meeting and give direction to Kevin. So I'm just opening this as a placeholder for counselors to discuss that. Go ahead, Counselor Bjornson.
Since the public safety fee came in at less than what was being asked for in the original budget and we never were able to pass a supplemental, I would really like to see, I know there's a lot going on for Kevin and Colleen, but I'd really like to see if we did what the public's asking us and repealed it immediately or next meeting or however that would work. What would that whole do to our budget? What would our supplemental look like if we did that?
Thank you, Counselor Bjornson. Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
That kind of answered my question. I wanted to make sure what the outcome was going to happen. If we canceled it right now and being we didn't get the required amounts, what's the difference?
Feel free to interject at any time, Kevin. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, well, I was actually wondering, we're having a finance report a little later in the meeting, but I was wondering if Colleen was available to maybe update us on the status of, you know, the glitch on the reporting for the public safety fee. Is she here to know?
I saw her name. Colleen, do you feel comfortable answering anything? Or maybe she's gone now. She was here earlier.
I think she just got kicked. She was on just a second ago.
Oh, bummer.
Yeah, so I'm happy to get a report from her. So it's all packaged into the work session. I, I, I believe that that part was fixed because I think she talked about the last council meeting, but I'll verify and make sure that gets addressed as part of the work session.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to clarify more specifically if the reporting numbers that we saw in tonight's packet are accurate.
As far as I know, yes. And so like I mentioned before, you know, once the books close on the month of March, we'll be done with quarter three. So with only one quarter remaining, we'll be able to, to give you some really good solid, hopefully information for council to make some policy decisions as part of the proposed budget.
I, I feel like we should wait and discuss that, maybe schedule a, a work session. You said, is that what your plan was to schedule a work session, Kevin?
That's correct, Counselor Dawn. April 7th is your first regular meeting and that's what I, Colleen and I plan to do a little PowerPoint for you.
Okay, at the council meeting.
And that was April 7th? You're muted, Kevin.
Sorry, I don't have my calendar in front of me, so I'm going by memory here. So if someone has their calendar in front of them, I want to make sure.
I'm looking, yeah, yes, that would be April 7th.
Great.
All right. Did you have anything else, Counselor Kenyon?
No, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Bjornson.
Uh, Kevin, can you clarify that work session on April 7th? You had said earlier it was going to be to discuss the appeal process and policies regarding nonprofits, et cetera. Is that also where we're going to discuss what the, the budget would look like if we repealed the public safety fee?
So as currently scoped, I'm trying to get you the best numbers in terms of what we projected from our current budget, what we've collected through quarter three and what we're projecting in terms of a deficit. I can speak to some of the appeal process that's already in the ordinance that council approved to create the program. But the primary reason for the work session is to answer some council questions that came up in your last council meeting and to just get your really good information and data prior to the proposed budget getting released on the 18th.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Any more counsel? Okay, seeing no hands raised. Uh, moving on to 9.3 WAC committee, I just wanted to bring this up real quick. We talked about it. Counselor Spleeloff, did you have something?
Yes. Colleen's trying to connect in right now, just in case she didn't see.
Okay, I did not see that.
We have a second. It looks like she didn't get in. She's still having troubles.
Okay. All right, so the WAC committee that we formed at the last council meeting, I just wanted to mention, we talked about that it would be Counselor Kenyon and Counselor Hooker and myself. And after talking a little bit with Counselor Whitney, she expressed a desire to be on that committee. So I'm actually going to replace Dawn Kenyon with Counselor Whitney. So it will be instead of those three, it'll be the three of us. And if we need to do that by a new vote, I'm fine with that. However, council wants to move forward with that.
I'm okay with moving forward.
With voting?
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Sorry, I forgot to you. I was just going to make sure that Dawn was okay with that before we moved forward. They didn't want to step on any toes or anything.
Yes, absolutely. That's fine with me. I understand.
Perfect, yeah. I just have a love and a, and a history with that building, so.
Yeah, I remember.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So I don't have anything more for that committee. And I think as far as 9.4, the museum appeal, we kind of just addressed that, that Kevin's going to do a work session on April 7th to discuss the appeals process. So I'm going to leave that unless any other counselors have more questions on that topic. All right, seeing none, let's move on to business from the city administrator. Uh, go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Hey, sorry. You move on before there's even time to scroll the mouse down and click on the buttons to put my hand up.
Sorry.
I just wanted to mention that I saw that letter when I was at City Hall. Mayor Hollitt was opening it and I looked up the, I looked up the ordinance which states that the first process for, what is it called, filing a an appeal is that it goes to our finance director and then to do a formal appeal process. And then if the client or customer still wants to further appeal, then it would go to council. And my question on that would be the, when it comes to council, is it a full, like a legal appeal hearing? Or is it just a conversation in, on an agenda item? That's not clear.
I, I can try to answer that. It's really just, it's providing due process for your customer. So you know, there are multiple steps, right? There, it's got to go to me first. If I, if I don't agree with it or I deny it, then it goes to, in this case, Colleen or finance director. If she agrees with me, then she can appeal to the city council. So it, it just provides another opportunity for the customer to say their case.
So is that what the ordinance is? It, does it go to the city administrator first and then to the finance director? Is that how it works?
Yeah, so the initial application comes to my desk. I look at it. If I have enough information to be able to make a determination, then I either approve it or I have to deny it. And so then I have to obviously put some paperwork behind that. If it's denied, then the appeal process can start.
All right. Um, when I read through it, it seemed the opposite to me. Counselor Kenyon, did you have anything else to say here?
Uh, no, that was everything. Thank you.
Counselor Bjornson, I saw a hand up real quick. Do you have anything?
Nope, sorry.
Counselor Spleeloff? You're muted.
I seen Colleen's back up again, so she may want to answer some of those questions.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Um, I was just suggest making sure with this process, we just get a legal opinion from our attorney of what his opinion is based on, on what we implemented and what that process should look like. That way it's very clear, very transparent. And we do give everybody their due process. We don't have any legal issues that may come up from how we handle something like that.
Okay, real quick, Colleen, are you on?
I am. Can you guys hear me? Because I feel like I'm freezing up.
I can hear you good.
Okay. And I missed like a whole lot of what was going on before I got back in here.
Um, so just to catch you up, we were talking about the public safety fee and Counselor Bjornson's question. Actually, I'll just let her say it. She has her hand raised. Go ahead, Counselor Bjornson.
Yeah, regarding the petition from the citizens, I would just like to see, since we weren't able to get a supplemental passed, um, I would just like to see what our budget would look like if we were to repeal the public safety fee that we have in place right now, what that would, would do to our budget and what we would have to, what steps we would have to take.
And the second part of that conversation was, I read the, you probably heard earlier, the letter from the museum. So we were discussing the appeal process. Do you have anything to add on that?
Are you asking me or Colleen?
Colleen.
Okay, just, just make sure.
I believe there's some technical issues, Mayor.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. Okay, well, we will reserve that conversation for the work session on the 7th. Go ahead, Counselor Bjornson.
Yeah, continuing what Counselor Whitney was just talking about, wasn't the ordinance as written already okayed and cleared by our attorneys? Where it says that the original application for exemption would go to the city administrator. If it's denied, like the museums one was by the previous city administrator, not necessarily Kevin Cronin. Then it goes to the finance director for appeal?
That's what the ordinance says.
That's the way I interpreted it as well.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember exactly how it read. But if that, if it's very clear, then we don't need that information.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Okay, I know, I know some people that have refused to pay that. If it gets repealed, do they still have to pay the back balance or is that going to be eliminated?
I think some of these comments, let's go ahead and save this discussion for the work session on the 7th because we're kind of going down a rabbit hole here and maybe write all these questions down and then you could give them to Kevin ahead of time or just ask him in the work session because I think that's what he's preparing for. Is that correct, Kevin?
So that last issue that was brought up by council already is, is a good one and it's not one that I was planning on, but I can certainly do some crack research and provide some good info for the council on the 7th.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to 11.1, the WAC funding committee with Sarah Ultimus.
You guys have me here? Okay, sorry. This computer could be a little slow. Let me share my screen. So I'm here to talk to you about a WAC funding committee, a volunteer funding committee as part of the nonprofit group that I'm the executive director of. This is separate from your WAC committee. So, oh, I can't share while you're sharing, Kevin. And have you made me a co-host by chance?
I just put up multiple participants, see if that works.
Okay. Yep, okay. So I can go through, I just have about four or five slides here. So you guys see my screen now?
No.
No, I still see Kevin's.
Oh. Well, I'm telling it to. Oh, no.
I see it.
You guys have it now. Okay, great. There we go.
Oh, nice.
Great. Okay, so, um, we've been having a lot of questions lately about who's South Limit Solutions is as the nonprofit that oversees Oak Ridge Air and Southern Limit Forest Collaborative.
One second, Sarah. Does everyone else see, does everyone else see Sarah's presentation?
No, I don't.
Yeah, I don't see it even.
No, if you go up to view options up at the top of your Zoom screen, you can choose to look at Sarah's screen as well.
Thank you.
And I should say.
Okay, sorry, I just bounced out of it. Oh, I'm coming back in. Okay, now can you guys see that?
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Great. Um, so South Limit Solutions is a nonprofit that we formed in 2019. The Southern Limit Forest Collaborative came up under the Upper Limit Community Development Corporation. And when we grew to be big enough, they shepherd us off to start a nonprofit. So we started South Limit Solutions. And we wrote it with a broader mission than just the forest collaborative, knowing that we wanted to do more community work that was coming our way. So the mission of SWS is to promote, coordinate and support creative solutions that strengthen rural communities, economies and landscapes. So our two main projects right now are Oak Ridge Air and the Southern Limit Forest Collaborative. And we mostly manage grants to achieve this work. So I wanted to remind you guys about the Chamber Partners Group. This was a group that in the midst of COVID, we started in 2020. As the world was turning to Zoom meetings, we realized we could meet over Zoom and still see a lot of the partners we worked with, who we weren't able to meet with person, in person with. So I helped start facilitating those groups with the Chamber of Commerce. And we did a lot of work around COVID with that. And then it evolved into just regular monthly meetings, standing monthly meeting after that. And it's a really great group of some of our partner agencies and then community members as well, most involved in the chamber. But the mayor sits on that or joins those monthly meetings as does the mayor of Westford. You can see some of the other partners that regularly attend these meetings. And these are open to the public. Anyone who's a member of the chamber or partner agency can join. So in the February 2022 meeting, I brought up a, the WAC funding committee. I think it'd been just the, a meeting or two prior. I had spoken to council and said, because you guys had extended ARPA funds to keep the WAC open for the year. And I spoke in support of that, noting that we really do need to keep the WAC facility intact because it's a great opportunity for our community to co-locate services that we do depend on. And, and not only is the food bank important, in the past, there's been a lot of other community services that have been there. So my thinking was, there's lots of dollars coming right, down right now from federal agencies, infrastructure and whatever else. Well, during that meeting, we talked a little bit about whether the committee should be a spinoff from that group or a spinoff from my group, but we kind of left it at that. Well, two days later, Lane County was asked from Senator Floyd Przansky's office of any Um, Senator Floyd Przansky's office of any uh shovel-ready projects that might be available in Lane County. And Jenna, uh fortunate to us, uh remembered the discussion around the WAC, and she Googled it, and she saw on the city's website. That there was a proposal there um that had been done for one point eight five million. So she submitted to Floyd one point five. And Floyd passed that on um through the appropriations process, and it got put into a bill that was passed just a few days later. So we were awarded one point five million to the city of Oak Ridge for the Willamette Activity Center. Which is a wonderful thing and um. And. Uh, it gets us started on what we need to do. Um, when the analysis was done, that uh that report, that's on the city's website. Um, that talks about the one point eight five, that was about twelve years ago, I believe. So uh numbers have probably easily doubled. On what it would cost to shore up that building. So the way that um I saw this is a great opportunity to use that one point five as seed funding. Um, so I figure we still have to have a funding committee. Uh, we can't pass up this opportunity. So I wanted to talk to you guys about why I thought that and why I shared that with other partners. So how grant funding works is you identify your project and you identify your grant funding source and you go after it. So right now. We got the easiest kind of grant funding you're ever gonna get, and that is a line item and some appropriations budget from the state or for federal government, right? Um, so we don't have to do much around that. That's gonna come into the city's um budget. Uh, but there will be a timeline with it, so we don't know what that looks like yet. I don't think there's been any information yet. We don't even know which agency is gonna come down through. Um, oftentimes with grants, you have to identify your project, your timeline, and your budgets. And most grants require match. And so match is what has kept us from uh doing work on the WAC. In the past, you know, we've talked about it in the past four or five years. Most of the grants that are out there that make the most sense for um City to Oak Ridge. Uh, require twenty-five percent match. And so without any money to work with, we can't go leverage any dollars to get other funding. So I wanted to show you guys this little chart that I made, that when we're doing match, you can take local funding um or private funding and match it to state dollars. You can take local or private funding and match it to federal dollars, but you can't match state funding and state funding most often. There's some agencies that will let you, but it escapes by case. And you certainly cannot match federal funding to federal funding, regardless of which agency it is. So we have a really good opportunity right now with these dollars that came in from the state to go after some of these really big federal funding pots that are out there. So uh that's one of the reasons I felt like we really needed to start a committee. So I emailed our Chamber Partners Group, including um some other partners that don't regularly attend Chamber. Um, and said on the email, please share it with anyone else who you think might be interested in being on a funding committee. And I was really clear, this is a committee of folks who want to come together and look for grants and help apply for them to do the writing. Um, and the whole purpose is to first go find those funding opportunities, see what their call is, you know, wh- whether they want to fund. Uh, community services, or if they want to fund medical uh infrastructure, or if they want to fund. Just buildings, like, you know, we'll look for the funds and then develop a budget and then a timeline. But what's important is gonna be the timeline and matching those funds. When you have matched funds. They have to be spent in the budget timeline for your project. So we can't just go start spending the money on the WAC, that one point five million. Um, when it comes in and then apply for a grant a year later and look back and call it match. It has to be spent in that same time period. So we kind of want to wait until the money is in our, in our account. And we have grants identified that we want to call match and start spending it all together in one timeline. So it's a bit of a puzzle that you have to put together. Um, so we talked about that at the first meeting. We had twenty-three participants, um really good support. And um and heard from USDA Rural Development that there's an existing fund right now that we need to be looking at, as well as some other opportunities that are out there. So uh, that was just last week. Um, I went to my board on Monday at our regularly board meeting and said, hey, can we start an ad hoc committee? Um, we have under our uh bylaws, um ad hoc committees that can be set up with a specific person, purpose. Um, at our meeting, I asked about a chair, and Brian Kutchen volunteered to be a chair. And so our board set aside this committee with him as a chair for the next nine to twelve months to pursue grants. And this would be all volunteer effort. Now, the ask for you tonight is uh basically the authority to work with this committee. Not that this committee is gonna go out and make decisions for you, but to go out and do the groundwork to pursue, pursue those opportunities. And then come back to you and say, okay, we found this grant, such as this U.S.D.A. Rural Development Disaster Relief Funds. Um, we, we were able to access that grant. Um, the school district was for the generators that were just put in. So Rita and I started talking about that grant in twenty nineteen, shortly after a winter storm, and then generators just went in. So three years later. Um, so this can be a long timeline of uh that it takes for these projects to come together. But what's uh great is that, you know, those are funds that we would not otherwise have. Um, and this, the disaster relief funds, there's still funding left in that twenty nineteen disaster uh fund account. So um we heard from USDA Rural Development, um Holly told us that she's heard there's up to thirty million um still available. Uh, across the country. She doesn't know how much Oregon has pulled down or how much she'll have access to. But if the city makes a request, she can then find out. So there's some immediate next steps. And she said, do this as soon as possible, because she believes these funds need to be programmed in the next six months. Or the fund will get pulled back, pulled back and go back to the National Treasury. Um, there's also a congressionally directed spending opportunity, so this is um. Uh, what are known as earmarks. Uh, nationally, there's a call out for those that are due April first. And then um we also talked about uh Odo has a grant opportunity due in June for solar. So there are some definite things that are just easy. Off the top um of the list that we should be looking at right now, and we know that there's more out there. So our ask for you is to recognize this committee as a partner. And then to make appropriate steps to start pursuing these funds and gather more information. Um, and come back to you when there's grant opportunities that make sense and potential budgets and what they could be used for. So I'm happy to take any questions. And I'll go ahead and pop out of that right now. Yeah, go ahead, Dawn.
Uh, Sarah, thank you. I wanted to know if the grant that you already got approved for. Uh, would it cover the cost of getting a new. Renovation construction cost estimate on the WAC?
Um, yeah, we don't even know that yet. We don't know the exact terms. All we know that the line item was set aside for the. Um, uh, not remodeling, but um. So- something along the lines of remodeling of the Willamette Activity Center. Now, I would assume that would be part of it. Uh, but we also have that existing report we could build off of, so we could just use that to get updated um numbers and assessments.
Well, I, I guess I'm really not comfortable with using the twelve-year-old report for um. For authorizing a project that I think is probably. Three or four times that amount, you know, the. The one point, whatever million you just got granted is probably gonna. Maybe cover the roof.
Yep.
These stages, so uh, you know, why would, why would we want to say, yeah, let's move forward, let's get a new roof on that building? And then never know that we would get the funds to do the rest of the building and end up tearing it down. What a waste of money.
Yep. Yep, Dawn, that's exactly why I'm here, and that's exactly why we started that funding committee. It's to go out and search for, use that one point five as a leverage. To go out and find grants to get us to that higher amount, which is probably gonna be four and a half, five million to shore up that building. And so that's the request from you is, one, to put a pause on going and hiring a contractor in next steps. And give us a little bit of time, six to nine months, to go out and find additional funds, because if we can find more funds. Then we are much more likely to be successful at remodeling that building.
Yeah, um, I would just like to suggest to the council um that maybe we would. Ask our city administrator to get a quote from our city engineer for what it would cost to repeat that same. Document over, all over again with new numbers, that renovation construction cost estimate. I mean, if it's a minimal amount, whether the grant covers it or not, maybe we should just pony up and get that done, so we really know what. You know, what you guys are even looking at. Or, or we're looking at, the council, we have to.
That was actually my exact thought that. That we need to really know at least a ballpark of what we're looking at. And just so everyone knows, I did sit in at Sarah Ultimus's uh funding committee meeting. And so um I, I listened to all the stuff that she went over, and it sounds like a really good team of people. But yeah, I kind of left that meeting thinking the same thing. We really need to know as for, for a foundation for us on our next decisions. Of, you know, how much that number has changed, as like you said, um. Were probably triple to quadruple the number. So what would be the reasoning in holding off and getting another um estimate?
Oh, I don't mean to hold off for an estimate. I mean, hold off on starting to spend the entire amount.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
Understood, okay.
If, if the funds are authorized for to, you know, update those shovel-ready plans, which I would assume they would be, then absolutely, I think that's the smart thing to do. But we might also be able to, through these groups, find a partner group that would help us with that as well if they're not. Um, so that's where maybe the smaller grants that are available from Business Oregon or some of our other partners could, could come in. But I think that's the team of people that can take these next steps. And you know, Chrissy, right now, you're on that committee, and Bobby has expressed interest too, and you know, keep the communication flow going back and forth. Um, and I should add that uh Kevin was able to attend the first meeting. Um, I'm not sure what his intent, you know, he's able to keep up on all of them, but Grace also. Is able to attend. So this would be in lockstep with the city. You know, we're not gonna get out in front of um. Of what's feasible. But yeah, I meant just if we start programming those, that one point five right now, because everybody knows roof's number one. If we don't have a roof, that building's gonna fall down at any moment. Um, but to hold off and to give us a little bit of time, start exploring some of these opportunities. To see if we can get some matching dollars.
Thank you. Dawn, I'm sorry, I didn't ask. Did you have any more questions for Sarah?
Um. No, I, no, but I'll probably go again after Bobby.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Whitney. Are you there, Counselor Whitney? Does anyone else have any more questions?
I'm still. Sorry.
Okay, go ahead. That's okay.
Things were covering up my, my microphone. Um, so I agree with getting new numbers. I think it's a really good idea. You know, lets us know, have a better idea of where we're at. And it doesn't mean we would necessarily go with the exact plans that were provided before, because needs change. But I don't see any reason why we couldn't um allow the committee. To form, authorize a committee to look for additional funding and have it done simultaneously. Um, I, I, I just don't think there's any reason to hold them back at this point. Um, we know that there's a lot that can be done down there, and um I think moving forward is. As quickly as possible, while the funding is there is important. And it sounds like one of the funding sources was a hurry up and get. Something into me so we can move forward. You know, I just, I don't think time. Um, is one of our friends in this. I think we really need to, you know. Kind of have two parallel tracks going at the same time, if not more, to really get this to work.
Sarah, is there anything you're waiting on us from, or?
Well, just, I mean, th- this kind of official partnership, so the committee can reach out to USDA. On behalf of the city and say, okay, what are your terms? What's the funding? What's the match requirements? What's your timeline? Really start chasing down those. Those opportunities. Uh, similarly, you know, there might be opportunities that we don't realize that could um end up looking a little bit different. Like USDA has had huge amounts of funding in the past for community um-based health centers. Well, what if we could get a large amount of that and do even an expansion on the WAC? Um, those are the types of things, we really just want to do the groundwork and see what, what are the possibilities that are out there. And be ready to act quickly as these federal agencies are seeing these plus-ups because of the infrastructure package that built back, back better. Um, and then also um agencies are getting huge plus-ups right now and to look at those possibilities. And then there's potential, you know, COVID dollars. What if there's a way to work some of that in? So those are the things, you know, we want to be looking at right now. So we don't. We don't necessarily um. Know that we're gonna do anything right away. That's where we come back to you, but we really want to do that groundwork. Uh, but you know, really just need. To have your awareness and support in, in going out and seeking more information.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I do want to move forward and support your efforts. I think that's a great idea, um, what you guys are doing. But I wanted to clarify, um, the one point five million that you say you've already been awarded for the city. It, it does not require a match from us. Is that correct?
Exactly, no match. This is the easiest money we're ever gonna see. It literally just came to us. It's a gift. And so how do we take this opportunity and leverage it? And, and, and do so, because if we go spend it before we've, you know, got another grant under um contract. Then we can't ever use that as match.
Yeah, no, we don't want to do that. But I wanted to also mention though to the council that uh we're going to need to get it on our agenda. To have a meeting to discuss keeping the WAC open during um this period. She's talking about six to nine months, and we are projected to close the WAC in the end of June, according to our budget. And, and our um. Uh, motions that we've passed in December of twenty twenty-one, so. We need to get that on our agenda.
Good point. Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Um, I just, just a little further back in the conversation, um, you know, with what Sarah was talking about, the entities that have been there before. You know, we've had Planned Parenthood that used to be there on a weekly basis at one point in time. Um, you know, WIC, um Department of Human Services, Child Welfare has even had a space there before. Um, multiple agencies um have been in there. So I think once you create a good, um. You know, inviting space where um agencies could come in, and we can show that they have a space um that will work well for them. It, it might make it easier to get those services up here for our community members. So. It gets, it's great that the committee is really um wanting to get our approval and wanting to. Really look outside the box and like really broad at different funding sources. Plenty of opportunity.
Right, Bobby, and I think that's really kind of what we want to do, even if we can only bring in another, you know, couple hundred thousand. If it's enough that makes the building attractive enough, you can get tenants back in there, then that's gonna keep it going long-term and buy us longevity. And the future and potential match in the future to keep, you know, doing the improvements that are needed. Because yeah, we're at the point that deferred maintenance has got us to the, the building, the, the condition of the building to the point that nobody wants to rent there anymore.
No, no, I've been in that building as an employee with senior disability services, and it's a pretty scary place to be, especially. If you're in there alone, so. Yeah, definitely need some work.
Go ahead, Counselor Spiloff.
Yes, I, I agree with uh. Don there that, and you that it'd be a good thing to look into. Uh, I noticed in reading through that, they were talking about the poll bargain that's no longer there. Too, so that's a little less money. Uh, but I would like to see a new. Estimate of what the cost would be. And, you know, compared to that one that was a long time ago. And I don't know how much would that cost to get that new estimate done.
Well, that's what we'll have to direct Kevin to get a um, a cost estimate from our engineer. Um, so I just wanted to make one clarification when we talked, um, and this is kind of just for our counselor. That we do have two separate WAC committees, so um our committee, as far as the city goes. We're gonna be working on, you know, who goes in there and that kind of stuff. And Sarah did talk about in the funding committee that the. The funding committee is not worried about taking walls out and, you know, who, which tenant gets to rent which room. And, and what the wall color is, et cetera, et cetera, and um. You know, the overall planning of the building. You know, the overall planning of the building isn't a part of the funding committee. However, I just want to say that I do think that these two committees need to be able to communicate really well together. Because these are going to be mo- moving um moving components that really can just work really well together. If we're talking to each other and our committee is talking about our desires and our plans for the future. That's where we can get that information to the funding committee and maybe they can work on it in that direction. Or vice versa, they see an opportunity come up and let us know, hey. This is something that you guys need to think about. So I just wanted to put that out there. And Sarah, if you have anything to add to that, please do.
Yeah, I think you covered it really well, Chrissy. I think that's exactly what it could look like. Is, you know, we really just want to go out there and see what the funds are and there's not going to be. You know, you guys will approve budgets that go forward for for grants. So if there's like kind of new opportunities that we don't envision right now. You would know what those would look like.
Go ahead, Counselor Coker. Nice to see you.
I just want to apologize for being late and let you know I'm here and I'm on my phone. And Sarah, I want to thank you for all the work that you've done from what I have caught. I love every bit of it and am very excited to see the WAC hopefully back up and operating.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Um, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
Go ahead.
Um, I move we recognize the WAC Funding Committee as a partner of the City of Oak Ridge and authorize. The committee to move forward with accessing and applying Revolut Activity Center Rehabilitation Funding.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Whitney and seconded by Counselor Coker. Is there any more discussion on that motion? Jackie, can you call for the vote?
Counselor Bjorn.
I.
Counselor Spleeloff.
You. You're breaking up. Did you ask for me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Hooker.
I.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Whitney.
I.
Mayor Hullett.
I.
Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, before we move on, I think it might be important to have just a little bit more discussion about directing Kevin to uh talk to our. Engineer about maybe an updated estimate. So getting what.
Yeah.
An estimate for an estimate.
I can anticipate the question. Um, so I can certainly talk to Ed and he can just give me kind of a wag, a free wag. At it. I can also put any number into Google and it can spit out. You know, I I can put any year, I can put nineteen hundred dollars and it'd give me today's dollars. That's free. But if we're really after trying to figure out what the unit price is of a specific item in the contract. Um, for instance, the roof, it's much easier to get roof bids. Than it is to try to do a whole new cost estimate for a project. So i- in in so many words, we're trying to save the city some money um on this before we know. Uh, how much money we have to spend. And given our budget situation, I just want to be sensitive to that. So I'm happy to try to put some numbers together and as this makes it back on to the council agenda, I can I can share an update or I can send it by email.
Thank you. Well, I think we should definitely do whatever's free. But um, maybe a secondary one too. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I just want to specify that I just want to know. What it, what our engineer would charge us to do a new estimate. I'm not asking. To have a new estimate done. Does that make sense?
Yes.
That was my, my very uh colloquial way of saying, I'm going to go talk to Ed and try to get a cost estimate. Of what it's cost to update that process.
Yeah, I do want to add, um, today Counselor Whitney and I and Kevin did a pretty thorough walkthrough of the WAC. And I think something important to consider is, you know, although that bid is twelve years old. Um, there might be even um some of those ex- exterior buildings. You know, although the um, the gym is in good shape, if we were to get a new bid, it might be something like. Some of those buildings are just not salvageable. Um, you know, the roof is so bad and there's just a litany of issues going on. So that bid twelve years ago may have been for the entire building, but a new bid might say. Um, you know, save these buildings and X out these other ones. So just kind of food for thought. Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, we we did um do a really good walkthrough today and and Mayor Hullett is absolutely right in that. And and just to remind people, those buildings used to stand by themselves, you know, they, if you look, they all have exterior siding. Because they were standalone um buildings and that's why each one has multiple bathrooms, you know. Um, so it, you know, if it comes down to that, that's not. An unreasonable thing to think that could happen. Um, and there's, you know, I think there's a lot of opportunity to. To really think, um, not big, but kind of outside the box and and find something that's going to work well for our whole community. Um, and then since we're talking about this, um, I think we need to. Not today, but to have a discussion about the gym and making sure that it's available as a community room, because that's what it's always been. Um, just to make sure that we get that worthy of being able to allow others to rent the space. Um, because, you know, we've had plenty of events there and, you know, I remember being a little girl and the sugar plums to be there. So I remember going to the Sugar Plum Festival there and, you know, and all the um different events that happened there at Halloween. And um different things that we put on as a city. You know, there's just plenty of uses for that gym and we need to get it um. Ready for that again, you know, and with having a kitchen, I think. Um, with our disasters that we've had and all the wood smoke issues we've had, I think it could potentially be a great place. For people to go to maybe breathe clean air or, you know, God forbid, we have another snowstorm like we had. We just plenty of opportunity to do there and truly start talking about that, that space and. Uh, make sure we're utilizing it as a community space, which is what its intent has been all along.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Whitney. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I just would like to request that we would add that as an agenda item for our next meeting.
Got it. I'll put it on my notes.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else have anything regarding the WAC? Okay, on to report of staff. Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, so uh we've got Chief Martin uh ready to go. I've got a report. Uh, from Public Works that I can provide. Um, and the fire report, which is actually starting July first through. The end of February. Uh, I can answer that question from the very beginning of the meeting. That's in your packet, so. Um, let me go ahead and do public works really quick and then I can turn it over to Chief Martin. So wastewater plant, this is for the month of February, wastewater treated is ten point one nine million. Uh, they hog solids twice and then monthly discharge monitoring report for January. Other tasks performed, influent, influent, pH temp, dissolved oxygen sampling, tank tests and weekly permit tests. Uh, pressure washing slab and screens twice a week, check list stations every Friday. Checking status on washing compactor and getting a quote for a brand new rotating assembling for influent pumps at the plant. And then in terms of other public works activities for the month of February, uh water distributed thirteen point eight. A million gallons, service orders twenty five, locates fourteen, waste order pair zeros, water leaks zeros. Other tax tasks performed, meter repairs and maintenance, hydrant flushing, pressure testing, stamp pipe flushing. Uh, red water meters and delinquent list address, vehicle maintenance and repairs, park maintenance, building maintenance, street sweeping. Hot hole repairs and some fire hydrant repairs on top of that. Stockpiled fourteen loads of gravel. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Martin.
Good evening, uh, mayor, council and citizens. Uh, first I'll do the report for last month. We had three hundred and sixty calls and related thirty four case reports. Uh, I attended CIS training from our insurance carrier about insurance stuff. We had. Some ethics training that was departmental that everyone took. It's part of our yearly D P S T requirements. Uh, Officer Clevenger took some domestic violence training. Uh, and another thing, uh, shout out to Officer Clevenger. He was appointed on the D P S S T uh Police Policy Committee. By the D P S T Director, that committee sets some standards and policies for. It's a board that sets standards and policy for D P S S T. We, it's on the police policy. And then to. Answer the questions, I don't think that citizens here anymore, but we have a forty hour a month. Intergover agreement with the City of Lowell for police services. We, that doesn't really hurt us much because our reserve officer that lives in Lowell. And our reserve officer that lives in Springfield do a lot of that contract, so they work for free. All it costs is. Vehicle maintenance and fuel for the vehicle. So that's a pretty good deal for us. We also have an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Westford for police services and that consists of twenty hours a month for the team patrol and answering emergency. There's some other stuff in and out if people had questions and contacts.
I think I missed it, but how many hours do we have for Lowell?
Lowell is twenty hours a month and emergency calls. So that varies with the emergency.
So does that mean they patrol down there for twenty hours a month and then they can be called if there's a big emergency and we'll respond?
Excuse me. Lowell is forty hours a month.
Oh, okay.
There's forty hours a month. There is a clause in the contract for more hours that they pay hour per hour. And the, we don't usually use that. We use that like BlackBerry Jam, but they have done that since COVID, so.
Forty. Forty hours a month?
Yes, well, well, it never went on agreement was forty hours and and Westford is twenty hours a month and emergency.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to know. What's that little section behind the the old high school over there? You know, uh, Westridge High School. Is that part of Westford and do we cover that or not?
No, that's not our jurisdiction. It's not Westford's jurisdiction. You're talking about the trailer park area there?
No, uh, you go behind the high school. So if you, instead of turning across from the.
Oh, what? The the Westridge, like cul-de-sacs, that's right across from the Forest Service Station?
Yeah.
No, that's in Lane County.
Okay, so that's, yeah. Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Counselor? Uh, go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
I just wanted to thank Kevin for um taking the time to address that. Um, I just, and then I want to express my support of our police department and the work they do. You know, they do a lot of great work. Um, and just as many of our staff members do for the city um with little resources. So just to express that appreciation and support.
Well, thank you. I'll pass that on to the officers.
Thank you, Bobby. I absolutely agree with that.
It's like, Counselor Kenyon had a hand up to me.
Yes, I wanted to know if you could update us on the status of um your hiring process.
Uh, Sergeant McPreston and I have been working on that. There's been a lot of changes with police reform, so we're trying to sort through all that. Before we post anything, uh, we're going to try to post something before the end of this month for a officer position.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Spleeloff?
Yeah, a- again, another question. There's a little piece across from Green Waters. That is not annexed into the city. Do we, uh, do you, uh, police officers cover that too?
No, we do not. That's also in county.
Okay, thank you.
Again, there's sometimes we assist them when they request, but that is, that's old lane area that is also part of Lane County. But it's completely surrounded by city of pitch.
Yeah, that's why I was asking if we responded to anybody in there, they have to call Lane County first.
Technically speaking, that's their agency jurisdiction.
Did you have anything else, Counselor Spleeloff?
I know, I'm, that was the only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Martin. Oh, I do have a question for you. Did Officer Clevenger go on patrol in that getup today?
We got a picture, but no, no, maybe a little bit. He had the necklaces on today, so.
Oh, darn, that was great. Nice to see you guys in spirit.
I shouldn't have taken a photo for Facebook today, but I'm like, you know what, that's not really work really. It's but I was really tempted to do that.
We we put one on our Facebook page and.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
He's in the back listening, so.
I shared it. It's all over. Go ahead, Counselor Coker.
Mayor, I'm just letting you know I'm home now and I'm going to be switching to my computer.
Okay, I think we're almost done. Oh, never mind. Go ahead. Keep going. Anything else for Chief Martin? All right, thirteen, monthly finance report.
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn that over to Colleen. She'll give her regular updates for from her staff as well. Okay, she's just just texted me that she cannot get in, but she's going to try from her phone. Mayor, just to save time, do you want to uh ask if there are any questions from council so we can kind of queue them up?
Sure. Do any counselors have any financed questions? Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, a couple, I wanted to find out what Colleen's email address is. Because I had about thirteen questions. I wanted to send to her to get. You know, heard the time to prepare the answers before the meeting, but I didn't have an email address. Uh, so I'll have to save them for the next meeting because I don't want to put her on the spot with that many questions. Um, but I would like to know. Have we received our audits yet? The physical copies?
So unless Colleen has a different update, I have not been in contact with the auditor since the last council meeting. Uh, which tells me that they have nothing new to to provide me yet. But as soon as I do get it, um, hopefully it'll be ready for your next meeting in April.
Okay. Okay, um. Yeah, I'll save all the rest. I'll email them to her so she has some time to review them.
How about now? Is she on yet?
I did admit her. Let's see if she's available.
I don't think she's connected to audio.
Oh, I, she's trying to get on right now. I can see the the dancing dot.
Actually, I will confirm that one question I had earlier still stands, which is just to confirm if the current. Month's financial report has accurate numbers for the public safety fee. That's my only standing question for now.
Now she's muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Gotcha.
Yeah. Okay, um, no, because we knew that we were going to table that until the April seventh meeting. So, um, I, since we're gonna, since I'm gonna have to go through that for that meeting, I. For that meeting, I've got some other stuff that you guys were asking as well that I need to just go ahead and put together while I'm. Um, updating that uh, safety uh, fee in the books, so. I know you guys wanted to know if um, you know, what it would look like without it. And if we had to, um, if we discontinued it, we had to give funds back, um, numbers like that, so I'll, I'll have that already in the. Um, April 7th meeting.
Okay, um, Colleen, what's your email address?
It is going to be my first name, Colleen, C O L L E E N. Last name Shirley, S H I R L E Y. At C I. Dot Oak Ridge. Dot O R dot U S.
Okay, and you said going to be like it's not set up yet?
Well, you asked if it was, if, if the new financial report had the updated uh, numbers on that, correct?
Oh yeah, I meant, is your email active?
Oh yeah, my, my email's active, yes, of course.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Okay, I just wanted to know, means she is part of the, the city. And uh, I'd like to see your email up on our. Our Gmail account.
Yeah, we'll get that updated. It's, I, I did not realize it wasn't on there, so definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else for finance? All right, nothing for public hearing, correct, Kevin? All right, on to public comment. Kevin, do you have anyone in the room with you for public comment? Okay, anyone else on the Zoom that has a public comment? Go ahead, Trudy Hammond.
Hi, Trudy Hammond, 76349 Willamette Way. I'm really excited about the opportunities that are coming forward for the WAC. I went to school there as a child and I rented a space, not rented per se because I didn't have to pay, but. I was offered a free space there for the Community Pet Food Bank. I think that there's, there's um, opportunity where um, there's deals that could be made such as um, trading. Repairs for rent and turning in receipts for the repairs that could be done. Um, those are also oper- um, uh, options that possibly um. People who want to rent that space can, can provide um, trade labor, all kinds of volunteers. I'm just really excited and hopeful. For the future of the WAC and I really thank Sarah for, for stepping up and. And researching and going after the, the funds that um, can actually turn that. Space around for the, the community. There's a lot of attachment there as, as Counselor Whitney had spoken of, I share that same passion for that place. And as you get the mice out of there, I'll come back with the dog food. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trudy. Go ahead, Sarah.
Um, yeah, thanks, Trudy, and I just want to speak to that's, you know. Part of having nonprofits and communities is they can step in and help fill gaps, especially in small communities. That's part of the mission. Of our organization, um, but I actually wanted to talk to you guys about um, something I kind of mentioned earlier. Um, before the meeting started, so part of the work that SWS is doing right now is we help secure about half a million dollars. For fuels reduction work that will start around the Oak Ridge, Westford area um. Uh, basically next week, and so we, I was careful about talking about it before we had contracts. Um, our agreements with the state, the state in place, we just got those on Tuesday. So um, I submitted some press releases yesterday, I think there will be, there's an article in the Herald, um, Kevin posted our. Uh, two pager, or maybe it's three pager on the city website and there should be some information in the register guard. Um, stay tuned for more updates, we're looking at extending the yard waste uh, hours and days to um, allow for people to do. More yard waste disposal as well as um, uh, yard waste pickup option for six weeks. Um, for those that are senior citizen disabled or uh, low income. Um, and uh, then lastly, I wanted to say um, just to help. Manage expectations, uh, it sounds like a lot of money, but there's so much work that needs to get done, so this is just something to get us started. Um, and to show some model projects to community members. Um, and unfortunately, none of the grants that we went after this time and were awarded can fund work within city limits. Um, besides one project that's going to be doing fuels reduction right along the base of Laurelview. So I think people will be disappointed in that and it's just the way that those grants were available and how um, we went after them. Um, we will work with our funders if, to see if we can extend some of the boundaries and hit some of our targeted areas. Um, but that's just the reality, so I just wanted to let uh, people know that. Um, and I'm happy to answer her questions at any point, uh, we'll be reporting out on this regularly at our implementation advisory committee meetings, which meet monthly. Um, and then Dustin, Rimp, and you guys have heard from him before, uh, he's our, our lead um, person on this as our Firewise Coordinator. I did see a couple hot hands come up, those are questions for me, I'm happy to take them if you guys want to allow for the time.
Go ahead, guys.
Okay, I, I'd like to uh, throughout her uh. I want to thank Brian for um, being a volunteer in this instead of. Leaving uh, the city and not getting involved, so on that, I would. I really appreciate him for still being involved in the city. Very much, so if you could, he was on, I think, before and it's not now. But if you could uh, forward that to him, I sure appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely, um, I think that's one of the things that gave our board confidence in making this ad hoc committee is. Knowing there was a chair that was going to be able to do a lot of the work that we aren't exactly um. Uh, that we don't exactly have capacity for, um, we'll help support with note taking and whatnot, but I'm having that point person really helps.
Okay, thank you, I'm done.
Oh, us, thank you. So Sarah, the one thing you were just mentioning, a grant that you got for fuels reductions. Um, and that it's outside city limits. Is that what your point was?
Yeah, um, there's, it's actually four separate grants, so different rules for each one, real fun. Um, but we are uh, prioritizing first Laurelview, the ridge line between Oak Ridge and Westford. Um, then there's funding for Dunning Road, um, and then there's uh, funding for the Firewise community, the greater. What, um, Oak Ridge, Westford area, so that's basically all the county lands in Westford. Um, outside of town, and we'll have more information coming down um, as, as we uh, go to um, implement those. And our main implementing partner is going to be inbound, um, and the fire crews will be doing most of the work. Um, and that there is some maps available to look at and feel free to, to contact us directly for questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Does anyone else have any questions for Sarah? Any more public comment? All right, hearing none, um, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:36 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good weekend and happy St. Patrick's Day.
Uh, Mayor.
Oh.
We have executive session.
Oh, we do, well, that was to the public.
Okay.
Oh, well. You still have to announce we're going into it to the public.
I can quickly uh, hand it over to you after I announce the executive session.
Sure, I've got it in front of me too.
Oh, go for it, Mayor, please.
Okay, we're going to adjourn the public meeting and go into executive session. O R S 192 dot 660 print to print A to the governing. To consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. And we will not be coming back into public session. Kevin, will you be coming into that?
I am going to be signing off, I'm just trying to figure out how to the co-share at this point, um. Which button is it? Mayor, do you know which uh?
I think you have to hand over the hosting, the um.
Yeah, so where is that? I'm, it's late at night and my brain is uh, mush.
I think last time Jackie handed it over.
Yeah, so. I'm gonna have to stop the screen share. I'm not seeing where it is, so I'm going to leave this running for the time being, uh, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute and take off video. Uh, and I will.
Hey Kevin. Hey Kevin. I'll def- you'll have to give me hosting rights so that I can keep it locked down.
Right. Um, let me can, I'll continue to.
Okay.
Find this, sorry about that.
Okay.
I'm just finding the, the share screen options, I'm not finding with, with where the co-host is.
You want me to Google it?
Uh, I can do that, Counselor, thank you.
Mayor, I'm gonna um, take a little break just for.
All right, here we go. Found it, I'm going to make you the host.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry about that. Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone.
Have a good night, thank you.
You too, bye bye.
Night, Kevin.
Have a good night, Kevin.